Welcome, everyone. This meeting is now called to order. It is May 24th and we are in the Vincent y Grego Chambers. First, we will have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Andres Santiago. And I'll let you know when we do that, okay Andres?
.............................................
Thank you Andres. Madam County Manager, do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have one which is 11A. We would like to defer it. It's under adoption of resolution Information Technology IT Oracle Licensing.
Thank you. Also, I just want to let everyone know that the proclamation for Lieutenant Charles Dixon is we're going to have to probably do it somewhere if everybody's okay in the middle of the agenda only because they're coming all the way from Rio Rancho and they're running a little bit late. So we'll be, we'll do that when they get here. Thank you. Moving on to item seven, Public Common and Communications. How many people do we have signed up?
We have five people signed up.
Go ahead and call them.
Mark Burton, Mary Ann Randall, Janelle Miller.
My name is Mark Burton, President of the Singing Arrow Neighborhood Association. I also have Representative Jim Dines from District 20 here with me if you'd like to ask him any questions after the presentation. I am here to request a pilot program for mental health of Mitchell Rockwood. You're probably very familiar with him. I think a pilot program would be useful to help you understand the best way to approach this entire issue and you could use the results for your overall study. I've been talking to Dr. Eid. She's very familiar with Mitchell Rockwood and the things that he needs. I just spoke to her this morning. She said that he had been relocated to some other neighborhood in Albuquerque. I do not know what neighborhood, so it could be even a neighborhood near you. If we can't help Mitchell Rockwood, we can't help anyone. How do we get into this mess? In the 1840s Dorothy Dix spent 40 years of her life advocating the construction of mental health institutions. In the 1950s authorities spent another 40 years deconstructing those mental health institutions. And that's where we are today. I have a quote that's on a paper that I handed to you. "De-institutionalization combined with inadequate and underfunded community-based mental health care programs has forced the criminal justice system to provide the highly structured and supervised environment required by a minority of severely mentally ill population." So that's the situation we're dealing with today. May is Mental Health Month. We spent the last month talking about mental health. That's one reason why Representative Jim Dines is here. They've done the same thing in Santa Fe during the last legislative session and come up with Bill SB 113. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Julie?
Mary Ann Randall, Janelle Miller, Geraldine Amato, Rebecca Hindy. Mary Ann Randall, Janelle Miller, Geraldine Amato, Rebecca Hindy.
Hello.
Right to you. There you go.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Hindy and I think I have a good follow-up to our previous person that spoke. I'm here mainly on behalf of my son Brett Hubbard. He has mental illness and I'm here to talk about the tax that was passed and implemented last July for people, for the mental health issue and people with behavioral health issues. I was at the Burnley O'County Metropolitan Detention Center Oversight Committee meeting in April. I missed the one this month. But there was some discussion about diverting some of those funds to training the guards at the jail and I just almost crawled out of my skin. That money should be allocated for concrete transitional living services for people with mental illness. By concrete, I mean controlled environment when they're, when they're released from jail, so they're, they can't, my son's 31 and he has all the issues of a 31-year-old plus severe mental illness. Schizophrenia, bipolar. He's been diagnosed with everything on every medication. He was released with an ankle bracelet. He wandered off. I mean, you can tell him, "I'll buy you a car today, tomorrow Brett if you're, if you stay within, stay in the house today." It doesn't register. So I'm here to just really advocate for concrete housing, food, especially housing, and people that will, you know, take somebody to their appointments, making sure they get their, telling my son that he needs to go to pre-trial services is like telling my cat to go to pre-trial services. He, he won't go and then therefore he goes back to jail. So please consider, consider my request. And I'll have more to say later. Thank you.
Mary Ann Randall, Janelle Miller, Geraldine Amato.
Let's go to the next speaker, please.
Geraldine Amato.
Good evening. This federal flag that is worshipped at the beginning of this meeting references a God under which it is under. That God is the God of this world, what the Masons call the grand architect of the universe. They actually believe that this God has powers over everything God has created, the great God Almighty, the creator God. Announced this week is that the federal president, the 44th federal president, is to visit Hiroshima. In 1945, the 33rd federal president and those Mason adepts giving the orders devastated New Mexicans, many of whom recognize a holy trinity, would fall out from the Trinity site, July 16, 1945, which adds up to 33, the date, marked by an obelisk, an ancient symbol of sun worship with human sacrifices. Is this a conspiracy theory or an accomplished conspiracy reality? August 6, 1945, one of these nuclear bombs, the only nuclear bombs ever deployed by any nation in any war was dropped on Hiroshima. That date adds up to 33. And three days later, the bomb on Nagasaki. Hundreds of thousands of Japanese non-combatants, many of whom were Christians, were killed, ruined for life, and also generations ever since. While federal officials are in the press reportedly around the world to save us from nuclear war, there are, as the Albuquerque Journal has reported a few years ago, 1,500 nuclear warheads buried at, in the Sandia foothills by the base up here in Albuquerque. I don't think many Albuquerqueans even realize the significance of that. I bring this up to say this indicates the type of people who control the federal government and that we, the people, the good people left in this nation need to do something about these criminal operatives with authority over us. How many times does the bell have to ring? I'm sure you're quite capable of cutting me off without this damn thing going. You don't need this electronic device over here. It's just an annoyance and it's an atrocity for free speech so-called over here at these meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Talbert, did you have something to read or did you get that information yet? Oh, here it comes. Let's go ahead and do that right away.
Mr. Chair, I offer the following statement regarding the closed meeting litigation and real property meeting held Tuesday, May 24, 2016 at 3:00 PM. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on May 24, 2016 were discussed at the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement. It would become part of the minutes of this meeting.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Second statement, I move that the Burnley O'County Attorney and the County Manager be authorized to proceed with the negotiations and real property matters discussed in the closed meeting held May 24, 2016 at 3:00 PM within the parameters set by this commission.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to item eight, approval of minutes. We need approval of the May 10th. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. I move approval of the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 10A, an amendment to the ordinance for pawnbroker secondhand or precious metal dealers. Do you have somebody from legal here to speak to that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this, this ordinance is proposed, it, there's a longstanding pawnbroker ordinance in the code that's been around since 1965. What this ordinance would do...
Raise the mic a little bit, please. Thanks.
What this ordinance would do, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, is, is basically modernize the old ordinance by doing several things. First of all, it specifically adds precious metal dealers, which I think is helpful for enforcement, even though they, I believe under the old ordinance, they would still be added as secondhand dealers. It also increases, it triples the amount of time that a pawnbroker, secondhand dealer or precious metal dealer has to keep merchandise onsite in its form that he or she got it, received it from the pawnor or seller. And that brings it in line with both the city ordinance and the state statutes. And finally, we added some provisions that would allow for the revocation of a business license granted for a pawnbroker, secondhand dealer or precious metal dealer. And we also, you know, required used merchandise tags, which is more in line with the state statute. So I believe that this, this modernizes this ordinance, which is, which I was four years old when it was originally enacted and I think would be a good thing. I stand for questions.
Commissioner Hart-Stubbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, is this ordinance countywide or just for unincorporated county?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Stebbins, it would just be for the unincorporated portion of the county.
And does it match what the city, the city's ordinance?
It, it brings it much closer to what the city is doing. In the, in the main provisions, especially with the times, it identically tracks the city. So that way a pawnbroker or somebody who wanted to start one of these businesses, if they wanted to look at the regulations in both the city and the county, they would be looking at very similar regulations.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one more question. Is there a requirement that when someone comes in to sell precious metals, that some kind of ID is required and retained?
Yes, there currently is actually, that there's an ID. And in this, this one, there is as well. You know, I, I looked at a lot of different ordinances around the country and what I thought, I first thought that you could write this by requiring the pawnbroker or precious metal dealer to take a picture of the person and ask for an ID. But then I thought, then a criminal prosecution would be completely based upon the record-keeping skills of the individual proprietor and that probably there would be difficult prosecutions if, you know, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't, the records would be tough to get into evidence.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The reason that I asked that this ordinance be amended is because there are many, many, and you see signs actually everywhere where somebody says, "We buy precious metals." And they are not held to the same standard that a pawn shop is held to where you have to hold the metal for a period of time, whether it's jewelry or in any other form. So you literally can have a secondhand store or any mom and pop shop of any type and collect these precious metals and melt them down immediately. So if somebody breaks into your house, takes your rings and your jewelry over to the corner secondhand store, they can buy it from you and then they can melt it on the spot and they now have the value of this metal. So what will happen with this ordinance is anybody that is going to purchase precious metals has to abide by the law that the pawnbrokers have to abide by. The cities is a little bit stronger. I understand that the state is looking to introduce this change as well. And I think this is a good thing for the community because right now if somebody breaks in your house and steals your items and they can have it melted down right away, they don't have to go to a pawn shop. They can go to any precious metal dealer and just get it done. So I move approval of introduction.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Hart-Stubbins, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to item 10B, an industrial revenue bond for Peak Dining LLC.
Evening. I'm Marcos Gonzalez, interim director for economic development. Mr. Chairman, the economic development staff recommends the approval of the ordinance authorizing the Burnley O'County Commission to approve an industrial revenue bond application on behalf of Peak Dining LLC. The Peak Dining LLC ordinance approves the issuance of the bonds as well as the bond documents, indenture, lease agreement and bond purchase agreement. I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had a conversation with you earlier and I appreciate you and Jill meeting with me on the, the issue of having some consistency on the IRB, on the IRBs that we approve of. And we had some language in the last IRB to General Mills and I don't think it was restrictive at all, but it did mention things like first horse and servant contractors and employees, though you could argue that, you know, most of the likely will be done by hiring and also contracts will likely be done locally. But I think it would be important to have some consistency with the, with the IRB applications and so I will have an amendment to that effect. Appreciate you working with me on that.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Out of curiosity, our IRBs, I know we've had clawback provisions for some time, have we been consistent in our application of these IRBs in general or have they been kind of one-off type of agreements or do you follow a format when you go through and create the agreements?
Chairman Dela Cruz and Commissioner Johnson, the typical format has been that if the operation ceased within 10 years of the IRB, that those taxes that were exempt will be paid back.
So we've been relatively consistent. What we haven't had is any kind of local hiring preference language in there. Is that correct?
Chairman Dela Cruz, Commissioner Johnson, correct.
Okay. You know, I know that this is a 50-year business family. It's got deep roots in, in Burnley O'County and, well, I can say the Abruzzo name. I don't know why I'm being so quiet about it. I'm not personally worried about their local preferences in hiring. I don't think it's a bad idea to try and encourage local hiring where applicable and even local purchasing where applicable. I mean, certain things you can't buy here. In the General Mills case, you can't buy a food line that we don't make them here in New Mexico or in Burnley O'County. In this case, a mountain coaster, I don't think they make them anywhere in Burnley O'County. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Abruzzo, I could be wrong. I don't know. I just don't, haven't ever seen him anywhere in, in Burnley O'County. So those types of things, we shouldn't shut down our, our businesses or stop the opportunity for the lack of materials within our own state or within our own county. So while I agree with consistency in, in these efforts and with the idea and the concept of encouraging local hires and moving money into our local economy, investor money in this case from investors that'll be buying the bonds, I also don't want to hogtie any of our, our companies that are coming here with that requirement that could possibly stop them from proceeding with what we all need, job creation here in Burnley O'County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Talbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to follow up on Commissioner Johnson, the opportunity for when businesses is storied as the Abruzzos and what's happening at Sandia Peak to continue to provide economic development as recent as just three weeks ago with the new tram cars and new cabling and new opportunities for job creation with these industrial revenue bonds, following up what Commissioner Johnson says in terms of making it more difficult, the good news is they're creating jobs here and so even if they are importing things and even if they are buying things from out of state, they're doing it here in New Mexico. They're doing it up on a mountain that we all look at every day. And so always looking to hire local, I think, is what every business wants to do because it's less expensive. To go out of state is not cheaper, especially for things that the Abruzzos will need for what they're going to do. But if we make them do that, then we also force them to do other things within their business that may not be local. And I don't want that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hart-Stubbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in terms of the information that you provide to the commission, I'm wondering if we, if I could just request, I don't know if this has to be a policy change or something I can just ask you to do, but when, when these projects come to us, can you be specific from the outset in a very public way what the tax abatement is and what the period of time is? I think when the public sees something like $100 million for Wagner Mechanical, I think they think that's a, some people will think that's a $100 million transfer of county dollars to the company. I think it's important maybe from the very beginning that we be very clear on what the tax abatement is because, you know, in this, this case, I know you sent us something this afternoon that said, you know, it's what, under $300,000 over a period of 10, 15 years. Can that be a regular part of the information you provide us upon introduction of these proposals, of these IRB requests?
Commissioner Del, Chairman Dela Cruz and Commissioner Hart-Stubbins, we can provide the percentage amount that we're looking to do and the during introduction and final adoption, ordinarily sometimes we're still negotiating with the project, but as soon as that's finalized, we can make, make it as part of, more clear within the mini-track process.
At least within, you know, the 72 hours that is required by, I mean, you'd know 72 hours ahead of time, right, what the, what the final negotiations have produced?
Chairman Dela Cruz, Commissioner Hart-Stubbins, yes.
Okay. You know, because I look at the FIR and I think I've raised this before, it's not, that information is not included here. I think it really is the pertinent information, not so much the pilt, but the, you know, what the abatement is. It's an important sort of component of what we need to know when we're, and what I think also the public needs to know because I think the reality is much different from what the perception might be. So I would just ask, I've got no specific problems with this particular request. I think it is a fine and worthy request. I think it's just the information that we get could be more detailed, so. And I know you also provided today what the specific breakdown of the jobs and salaries would be. If that could just be a regular part of what we get, that we get far enough in advance, 72 hours, that we can actually evaluate it in, in making our decisions. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I support Commissioner Hart-Stubbins' suggestions. I think they're good suggestions. And I'd also like us to put on the county website, and I don't know that we have that right now, something that actually helps educate the public to what we're talking about. So when you're talking about an IRB or you're talking about a TID or you're talking about a PID, people often don't know what that means and they don't know what those vehicles do and how they do it and what those inducements or tax abatements really, really mean. As an example, and the reason Commissioner Hart-Stubbins that I supported is just this morning I had a friend ask me why we were giving all this money to Sandia Ski Company, whatever it's called. And I said, "We're not giving them any money. It's, it's a good project because I support the project." But the point is that people often don't know and it would be, I think, a handy tool, a vehicle, so people could go and see, get some definitions, get some understanding, just in general terms and then of course per specific item, as I think as the commissioner was suggesting. So I think we, I think that would be a great idea. Commissioner Hart-Stubbins.
And thank you. If I could just add on to that, I think that's a great idea that there'd be some kind of public and, you know, something available to the public explaining what each of these is. Could we do that for TIDs and PIDs as well? That just is very specific about what is a TID, how does it apply, what does it really mean to the public, same with a PID, any of the different economic development tools? So again, I absolutely support what, what Commissioner Dela Cruz has requested. I would like to add those two and maybe any others that you would think appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I actually very much agree because I can't tell you how many times I've dealt with the same situation as Commissioner Dela Cruz. They think we're giving $9 million or $100 million to somebody and after I go and explain what this really is, and this is a public education process, and by the way, I think Mr. McKay up there could help us a little bit with this, in the way that it's reported with regard to a county giving a $9 million industrial revenue bond to, to Sandia Peak in this particular case or $80 million for, or...
You should explain it right now.
Should explain it right now? Okay, I'd be happy to explain it right now. I think Marcos would be better at this point. But the, the fact of the matter is we float the bond, but it involves no county dollars. It does not include, and by the way, bond counsel, if I'm wrong in this, please speak up, it does not carry the full faith and credit of Burnley O'County, which means the taxpayers are not on the hook for this should, on any industrial revenue bond, should it fail. We've included clawbacks in these IRBs, all of them going back Wagner and onward. And in this case, the, you're going, in every case, you're bringing in new dollars through the bond market into Burnley O'County, whether it's $100 million for Wagner or $80 million for General Mills or $9 million for a local company right here in Burnley O'County that got their start and have really planted their flag here and been a part of our community for so long. It's important that they do that. It's a vehicle for tax abatement, the but-for analysis that you put into this particular project, and I think that's a great analysis to keep going on and have, have before the commission. This makes the project possible, the tax abatement makes the project possible. And what we're foregoing with that tax abatement isn't revenue that we're receiving now. We typically forego revenue that might be generated should the project be successful for a period of time. In this case, what is it, is it 20 years?
Chairman Dela Cruz, Commissioner Johnson, the term is 25 years?
25 years in this case. And it's often between 20 and 25 years. And so I very much appreciate the investment that the Abruzzos are making. I very much appreciate the investment that the bondholders will be making when they sell, when they purchase these bonds. And this is new money into our system, which is really important. And that's the reason I support... I support the encouragement of local purchasing, because that's money, it's new money that goes into our residents, our communities' pockets. So, thank you.
County Attorney, can we hold one public hearing for items 10B and C? They're closely related. I don't know if there's any difference.
I, the preference would be to hold them separately.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do that now. Julie, who do we have signed up?
We have two signed up. When I call your name, please make your way down to the podium. Michelle Koons and Geraldine Amato.
Good evening, Chairman Dela Cruz and fellow commissioners. My name is Michelle Koons, and I'm president of First National Bank. We are the largest independent community bank in the state of New Mexico headquartered right here in Albuquerque in the Sawmill District. I am here to speak on behalf, I understand we're handling the two separately, the, actually the new restaurant and the coaster. But I am a 34-year New Mexico banker, and I grew up skiing on Sandia Mountain as a pre-teen and as a teenager. But as a bank president in the state of New Mexico, I am keenly aware of how our economy continues to lag the rest of the country. And any new project and the investment of new dollars in our community, which creates jobs and additional dollars, is good for the state. So I am here to speak on behalf of both projects. I also want to point out that I think what most of the commissioners may be aware is that tourism is really one of our few bright spots in our economy today. The two that have really come back just since the recession are tourism and also healthcare. So it is very important that we continue to support those projects that bring back the additional dollars into Burn Leo County. I also wanted to comment, as has been brought up by Commissioner Talbot and also Johnson, that the Sandia Companies are a 50-year company. It is local, which is very important. And they have demonstrated what great stewards they are of the environment. So on that note, thank you very much.
Geraldine Amato.
I hadn't started speaking and I'm running the clock already. Would you kindly? Since we're under the United States Uniform Commercial Code, a private jurisdiction, you can smile, Dela Cruz, and be rude to me, but you're not rude to the aristocracy when they come up here. I would point you to Alan Greenspan when he was a young man in the 1960s, before he sold his soul to the devil for a cut of the action. He was more truthful in three essays he published. One was called "The Assault on Integrity," and I think that was the one where he mentioned that bond programs are confiscation of wealth projects. We are being economically developed into oblivion because the people who control the wealth of this nation consider all its resources as mere commodities for themselves to use as they wish. And so any business or industry that advances the fraudulent American dream of private indulgence while the nation and its people are being incrementally ruined and destroyed is bolstered by these million-dollar projects. The fact that job creation is dependent on government, corporate government programs, is one of the red flags indicating that the wealth and the resources of this nation are in private hands. A free people have resources upon which they can put their labor to support themselves. They don't need a handout from a government program to start any kind of business. They have enough wealth engaged in with community who also have enough wealth as free agents to begin businesses. Today, it is all dependent on a handout from the private banks to cartel that controls the economy of this nation. And they will not give resources for useful things for people's vitality and survival, and for the ability of this nation to take care of itself. Things are being outsourced, and so when they want to pull the plug, we'll be up a crick without a paddle, as they used to say in New Jersey. Any questions?
That concludes public hearing for item 10B.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can we have an ordinance number, please?
Ordinance 201615.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Talbot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move adoption of ordinance 201615, authorizing an IRB in an amount of $7 million for Peak Dining LLC.
We have a motion by Commissioner Talbot, a second by Commissioner Hart-Stevens. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Interestingly enough, this language that I'm looking at for the amendment was in response, actually, to some criticism about, and, you know, Commissioner Talbot mentioned last time, as we were starting to add this language to the General Mills in opposition because he felt that, you know, we had not done that before to prior applications. So this is my effort to sort of be consistent with the IRBs, knowing, of course, that there are different companies. We do have a local company, and it's very likely that they will easily adhere to some of these requirements. So my amendment is that we request that our bond council includes the negotiated language that hopefully they can work out, that incorporates the requirements around first source hiring, local contractor preference, and reporting requirements similar to what was added to the General Mills application.
Commissioners, is that a motion?
I move that, yes.
We have a motion on the amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Hart-Stevens. Any discussion on the amendments? I support consistency related to any of the processes that we have. I'm not sure that I'm ready to vote on any specific timelines or criteria. Commissioner, could you help me understand that a little bit?
Okay. So as part of the General Mills application, there was some language regarding first source hiring. So it's basically all things being equal, that is, that if you have the same qualifications, let's say, someone from out of town has similar qualifications from someone local, that the preference is to hire someone who's local. That's, as again, all things being equal. It sort of is the same way with local contractor preference. Clearly, there's some things that cannot be purchased locally, and, you know, that was talked about, and that does not affect those kinds of things. But again, all things being equal, that would be to, and of course, we don't have direct language in there. The idea was to bond counsel to work with the applicant to get language in there that was not restrictive. Obviously, we don't want to be restrictive, but that would basically say that this is the intent of the company. And then also, there was a reporting requirements regarding hiring, and that was part of General Mills' contract. So these were the three things. Again, we don't have vital language, but the idea was to work with the company to come up with vital language so that we could have these consistent things throughout the IRB process.
County Attorney, do we have that already in the language that can be adopted, or do we need to refine that?
I think we need to refine that, build it more specific.
So with what we have described this evening, can we go ahead and do an amendment, or do we need to defer that to another meeting so that it becomes more specific? Guess I'm not real clear. Maybe we can have bond counsel.
Yeah, maybe I'll take a look at that.
I just want us to make sure that we are, that our language is going to be tight enough and not ambiguous. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Chairman Dela Cruz. I'm Jill Sweeney, the chairman and Howard Bond Counsel of the county. I'm sorry, I always do that. I stand in the middle and not over the microphone. My apologies. So I think what Commissioner O'Malley is requesting is language similar to that which was proposed in General Mills. And what, we've not discussed this language with the company. However, what we have seen in, what we included in General Mills as far as local purchasing requirements was an amendment that established a preference for costs of labor services, materials, and supplies in connection with the project to, when possible, be purchased locally. And so that's the, that was, that was the gist of the local purchasing requirements. The local hiring requirements relate to hiring for appropriate positions for the project and having those go to qualified applicants residing in New Mexico with qualifications equal to or greater than applicants, you know, other applicants coming from out of state. So to the extent that those applicants are qualified and reside in the state, they, those applicants would be given preference over those applicants who may be applying from out of state. The third area is annual reporting. And annual reporting relates to local purchasing, job creation, wages, and payroll. And those are, those are the three areas, three of the areas that we discussed with General Mills and that we have before you in summary form tonight.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Sweeney. And so my understanding is that, you know, and these are very general policies. But the idea was, of course, to have some consistency in between, or that was my point, is to have consistency for the IRB applications. And quite frankly, I would be looking at putting that language in future, or amending, or, we probably need to have some kind of change to the ordinance to make sure that that language is in, and have to the council to have that language in all the, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, those, these terms would then be, should the commission choose to adopt this amendment, would be incorporated into the lease agreement?
Commissioner Talbot.
Do you need a moment to discuss this with the IRB recipient, Sandia Peak LLC, to make sure they would be agreeable? This is something they could feel comfortable doing. I suspect they probably would.
Commissioner Talbot, Mr. Chair, you have with you several members of the company and also their counsel.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Members of the commission, my name is David Buckholz with the Rhodey Law Firm, and I am representing the Sandia Tram and Ski Area interest in this matter. If I could indulge the council for about 30 seconds, I will make a suggestion to bond counsel as to how this amendment might occur, not speaking as to whether my client's in agreement with the amendment, but provide us some language that might be consistent with what Commissioner O'Malley has asked for. So if you could give me 30 seconds, I think I can do that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Talbot, what Mr. Buckholz is suggesting, that we add a line to the ordinance in the lease amend, the lease approval section that says that the lease will be approved as to form with those changes satisfactory to the company, including the local purchasing requirements, local hiring requirements, and annual reporting. So we're happy to do that. And then, as Commissioner O'Malley suggested, to negotiate the specific language in the lease as we move towards closing.
Commissioner O'Malley, are you satisfied with that change? So that would be part of your introduction. Okay, we have a motion and a second. But before we do that vote, I want to first say that I'm not going to support the amendment, not because I don't support the intent. I think that we have need for consistency. I think it's appropriate. I applaud Commissioner O'Malley's effort in this, but I prefer that we bring it back as a separate item and that we introduce the amendment, that it not be an amendment, that it be a standing policy at another meeting. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion fails on a 3-2. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you. I agree with Commissioner Dela Cruz here. We're trying to make a policy change on the fly, and I think that's not a good idea. And this is the second time we've done this. So we do need to take a look at this policy. I think in this particular case, since we don't have specific language to vote on, I don't think it's a really good idea to make the sausage here. I know that this company is not going anywhere. We're quite literally tethered to them through, well, the second largest tramway in the world. They're not going to pack that up and move it to Arizona, I don't believe. And I don't think that's a danger that we've got here. The Abruzzo Family's got long, deep roots here in Burn Leo County. And by the way, I meant to bring this up at the tramway, the tram car grand opening the other day. It was ironic to me, Louis, that this iconic picture of Albuquerque, the tram that's associated with Albuquerque, is actually in Burn Leo County. I just thought I'd point that out to everybody that may be watching. So I'm very supportive of the IRB. I think we ought to let you guys get to work. And so this amendment can wait, and we'll work on a, on a policy change that economic development and our bond council can go through and make sure that we're being consistent with local hiring and reporting requirements. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Member Johnson will promptly amend the policy and bring suggestions to you.
Perhaps in a couple of weeks, we could do that before the end of June, certainly, have some of those policy questions answered and voted on.
We have a motion and a second on the original item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 10C, industrial revenue bond for Sandia Peak's company.
I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, can we have an ordinance number, please?
Ordinance 201616.
Thank you. We have, can you, do we have people signed up for public hearing?
We have three signed up for public comment. Michelle Koons, Geraldine Amato, Sylvia Alvarez.
I felt that my comments addressed both projects, so I will defer to someone else to speak. Thank you.
Geraldine Amato, Sylvia Alvarez.
I want to emphasize again that any business or industry that enhances the fraudulent American dream of private indulgence while the nation faces all kinds of problems, many people are being displaced in the economy, is supported by such projects, and other more important projects are not because of who controls the resources of this nation. The Federal Reserve is not a public bank. It's a private banks to cartel. It essentially owns the federal government and hence controls all the resources of this nation. Some of us still have discretionary resources in possession. If we don't engage ourselves to use those discretionary sources in a manner better than private indulgence, we will reap the consequences. Now some folks can go about and go skiing and go vacationing, et cetera. Tourism is a trap on both ends of it. To have a local economy dependent on tourism is like having the Native American tribes depend on the casinos, giving up those things that will support ourselves and our vitality in the, right now. We forfeit that for a synthetic economy, an economy that is not accountable to us. It's controlled by those who control the wealth. So we are... So we are on the verge of economic collapse in this nation while we pitter around and do what our masters tell us. I lost one of my thoughts I wanted to conclude with, but again, job, oh, the tourism thing, those people have discretionary resources, go about visiting elsewheres and leaving their communities when they should use that discretionary resources at home, developing community again. We've been deliberately destroyed as a community of people in this nation. We need to reconnect with one another at the local level, and those who have discretionary resources need to reinvest it in the local area, not to go fritter it around, taking vacuous vacations and self-indulgence. Any questions?
Sylvia Alvarez.
Good evening, Chairman De La Cruz and fellow commissioners. I'm Sylvia Alvarez, and I'm here today to, oh, sorry. I'm here today to speak on, on behalf of Sandia Peak for the proposed IRB for the financing of the mountain coaster. I believe that this project will not only create jobs during the construction period, but also permanent jobs for local citizens of Albuquerque and New Mexico. This will be all year round, so it will be 12 months a year. The coaster will operate seven days a week during all seasons of the year. As such, it will appeal not only to the tourism industry, but to local residents who will be motivated to do family activities at the Sandia Peak. Creating this new income stream will result in future economic stability for the Sandia Peak. I am not a native of New Mexico, but I have been a resident of Albuquerque for 25 years, and I consider Albuquerque home. Throughout that time, I have received many visitors from out of state and from the United States. All have been repeat visitors of the Sandia Peak. I have no doubt that approval of the industrial revenue bonds will play an important role in supporting our local business, and it will continue to generate revenue for our state and for our county. Thank you very much.
That concludes public hearing for item 10C.
Thank you, Julie. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. At this time, we're going to do a proclamation for United States Navy Lieutenant Charles Bryant Dixon. Welcome.
Thank you.
It's my honor this evening to read this proclamation on behalf of your father. This is a proclamation sponsored by all commissioners, myself, Wayne Johnson, Debbie O'Malley, Maggie Hart-Stevens, and Lonnie Talbert. Whereas United States Navy Lieutenant Charles Bryant Dixon took off from Kirtland Air Force Base on June 8, 1951, in an AJ-1 Savage bomber for a practice bombing run with 100-pound water and sand practice bombs. And whereas Lieutenant Dixon, assigned to Sandia Base in Albuquerque, approached the practice bombing range west of Las Lunas, a fire broke out in the jet engine compartment, and whereas the fire quickly worsened, and the crew decided to abandon the plane and parachute to safety. And whereas Clayton R. Shepard, a North American aviation observer, parachuted to safety, a burst of flame enveloped much of the plane before it eventually crashed on or very near Valley Gold Dairy Farms in Burn Leo County's South Valley. And whereas Lieutenant Dixon and aviation machinist mate Petty Officer Second Class Elson Earl Pryor Jr. perished in the crash, serving their country on what was likely a secret training mission at the height of the Cold War. And whereas Lieutenant Dixon's surviving daughters, Gail Buchanan and Diane Carlivazos, and I hope I said that right, if not, you can correct me, have researched their father's case thoroughly, eventually obtaining the Air Force declassified crash report and visiting the site of their, of their father's final mission. And whereas, it is only, whereas after much persistent research and investigation, Lieutenant Dixon's daughters have successfully highlighted the fact that this unfortunate crash occurred on or veer the, very near the present Vía de Oro National Wildlife Refuge. And whereas it is only fitting that Burn Leo County worked closely with the Dixon family, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and New Mexico's congressional delegation to memorialize Lieutenant Dixon and Crew Chief Pryor's service to our country. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burn Leo County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor and celebrate Lieutenant Charles Dixon and Petty Officer Second Class Elson Earl Pryor Jr. for their service to the United States of America. Done this 24th day of May, 2016, in Burn Leo County, State of New Mexico, signed by all commissioners and attested to by our clerk, Maggie Tullus Oliver. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner De La Cruz and other commissioners that worked so hard on this. On behalf of myself and my sister, we really appreciate all that you've done to memorialize my father. I was 18 months old, and I, I don't remember anything, but I came back to this beautiful state and have made it now my home. And the wildlife refuge forever will be a sacred place for me because it is where my father is. It's where his life ended, and, and it was complete disintegration, so I feel he's there. Thank you very much.
We will be holding a public ceremony at Vía de Oro in the very near future, and we'll be announcing the date, time, and, and location. Moving on to item 11, was deferred, 11B, legal county attorney, the PNM rate case resolution. Mr. Clerk, if we could have an administrative resolution, please?
AR 2016-32.
Thank you. Julie?
I believe we need to vote on the deferral of the IT Oracle item.
Oh, great. So let's just back up a little bit to item 11A. We have-
I move deferral.
We have two motions to defer and a second by Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, defer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, moving on to item 11B, PNM rate case. Who is handling that, Julie?
Good evening, Chairman De La Cruz. My name is Jeff Albright, and I'm counsel working with Burn Leo County Attorney with respect to this proceeding. Chairman De La Cruz, commissioners, this is a resolution that comes before you with respect to the rate proceeding that's before the Public Regulation Commission in case PNM filed an application before the commission with regard to a rate increase requesting a revenue return of approximately $123.5 million. The commission conducted three weeks of hearings between April 11th and April 27th of this month. Various parties provided testimony and were subject to cross-examination. We have worked with the city of Albuquerque jointly in that proceeding, and they have a similar resolution that is, has been offered to the city and will be taken to the city council as well. The differences between the two are slightly, just slight, whereas there's more of an emphasis on the lighting program that the city has, since that's a significant portion of their revenue requirement on an annual basis. At the end of the day, our position on behalf of Burn Leo County was generally aligned with the position of the Attorney General and, for the most part, the staff of the Public Regulation Commission. The Attorney General has recommended a revenue return of approximately $27 million, although that has been reduced to about $25 million due to some additional information that has come in post the conclusion of the three-week hearing. That compares to the $123.5 million that was initially requested by PNM. The commission will be reopening the hearing to address the cost that's related to Palo Verde Two. We, along with a number of other folks, including the Attorney General, have recommended that if that system is proven to be needed for rate-based generation, that it be brought in at book value and not above book value, which has been requested by, by PNM. So with that, this resolution, what this resolution does is provide some background. It recommends a revenue requirement of no more than $59 million, which was staff's recommendation, and not less than the $27 million, or consistent with the $27 million that the Attorney General has recommended, again, subject to any adjustments that would be needed due to the reopening of the hearing. Return on equity, PNM's ROE has also requested an ROE, a return on equity, to their shareholders of approximately 10.5%. The base average is well below that for the past year based upon electric utilities across the country, and we would concur with, with the Attorney General that a 9.0 return on equity is sufficient in that a number of, of things have been, the risk has been passed to, to customers as opposed to shareholders. Again, Palo Verde Two, we would recommend that the 64 megawatts of PV2, if it is determined that it is necessary, its additional baseload would be brought in at book value, and that's consistent with the, the position that this county chose or selected in the San Juan closure case where PV3 was brought into rate base, but it was brought in at book value. There are fixed charges which we are generally opposed to, and again, that the Attorney General and some others have opposed. We contend that with regard to the street lighting, there will be a savings of approximately 40 to 55% on the cost by shifting to LED lighting on street lighting, a significant improvement, and that the fixed charges and standard rates should not apply that PNM is requesting, but rather that, that the cost to consumers, to Burn Leo County, to the city, would be at the volumetric use, at the use of the actual electricity that's being used. The smart LED technology is, is a proven technology, and it's only appropriate that, that the consumers in Burn Leo County and the city of Albuquerque pay for what they use. It will improve safety, and it will be able to determine exactly how much electricity is being used rather than just trying to average it across the, all of the meters. So that forms the basis of the general resolution. I stand for any further questions.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, the original request was for 123 million, or they just projected a revenue deficiency of 123.5 million, and it says, states here that that resulted, that would result in the average rate increase of approximately 4.39. What is the figure for 59 million? What is that a rate increase, rate increase? What percentage would that be of a rate increase?
Overall, it will depend on the rate structure. It's really determined in two phases. One is that there will be a determination of the overall revenue requirement, and then there will be a rate structure that is developed to fit with, within that new revenue. The hearing examiner has formed a group from different witnesses, PNM and other witnesses, that after the revenue amount is determined, will work with her to come up with the actual rate design. So that will show us how much is going to affect 1A and 1B, which are your residential people, how much is going to be in your small power, how much is going to be in the larger power. So we don't know precisely how that's going to be divided out at this point.
Okay. You mentioned an average increase of 14.43, so you're basically saying all the different users, that would come to an average of 14.
That's correct. For example, for the residential customers, the Attorney General in the response that they filed yesterday said that if the entire 123.5, for the residential customers, it would actually be in excess of 15%, be about 15.3%. So it does depend upon the, on the, on the use and the category in which customers find themselves or large power or general power users.
You mentioned the Attorney General changed, or reduced the number based on some new information. Do you, can you tell us what that is?
Yes, the, the new information primarily, well, it relates explicitly to, to the cost of Palo Verde Two. In attempting to bring 64 megawatts of energy from Palo Verde Two, PNM had some lease agreements. Instead of, they had an option to continue those lease agreements for some time. Instead, they went out and purchased those. There are questions as to whether or not that was an arm's-length transaction. There are questions as to whether or not it's, some of that may be excess capacity, and the value that they bought it at is in question because there are questions, as I say, whether it was arm's length or whether PNM had determined that they were going to buy it anyway. There was additional information that was filed in response to bench requests from the hearing examiner and from some of the, the PRC commissioners that came in after the record was closed. The information that came in was, had a difference of between about 25 and 30 million dollars difference from what had been testified to during the hearing, sworn testimony by PNM witnesses. In light of that difference that came into light, the commission, the PRC commission, has reopened the record to take additional evidence and determine whether the original numbers, the 123.5, was inflated based upon some of the information that came in subsequent to the record having been closed, and whether there ought to be further adjustment. In the testimony filed by the, I'm sorry, in the brief that was filed yesterday by the Attorney General, they calculate that that would make an additional difference of about a $2.5 million reduction in their revenue requirement, which would reduce the 27 million down to about 24 and a half, maybe 25 million. Again, we don't know all of the details yet, and that will be the subject of testimony by both PNM and by other witnesses in cross-examination beginning on June 27.
Since we are talking about a rate increase, given the, what's just happened with, you know, the fact that sworn testimony was disputed from the company, and you have to wonder, you know, what the, what's going on there, is this premature to basically agree to a rate increase at this point? Basically, that's the commission is saying. We agree that there will be a rate increase not to exceed 59 million, no less than 27. Now you're saying the Attorney General reduced it to 25. Is it premature to say, yeah, we should move forward?
Chairman De La Cruz, Commissioner O'Malley, this was presented and put together before that additional information had come to light. I would agree that I believe there's going to be some further downward pressure- I would agree that I believe there's going to be some further downward pressure on what that revenue requirement for PNM ought to be. And so certainly with respect to that aspect, I believe it'd be appropriate for the commission to consider deferring acting on the resolution at this point until we have the additional information from that testimony.
I would move a deferral then. I don't know.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners.
Moving on to item thirteen, discussion. First, we have Fleet and Facilities Management Downtown Building Acquisition. Mr. Paul.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Roger Paul, Deputy County Manager for Public Works. We've had obviously several meetings about this topic over the last couple of years and at the board's direction at our closed meeting several months, a couple of months ago, we wanted to come back to the board and give an update on where we are with the process and what the expectations moving forward might be of the board and solicit some potential direction as to the board's intent. At the board's direction at the, at the closed session, the board asked that staff meet with the proposers of the public-private partnership, if I might use the term P-three. We've had a couple of meetings with that group. We've had a subsequent telephone meeting with a financial organization that talks about how P-threes are structured, related to the type of concept that's being presented. And it, at this point, it's our opinion that to appropriately evaluate the P-three would, would entail the county and based on the conversation that the county managers had with the city of Albuquerque to potentially share the cost of approximately two hundred thousand dollars for an economic evaluation of the county's and the city's current situation, current budget and expenditures and operating expenses in the buildings that we currently own that would be tied in with the P-three. And that, that evaluation would establish what the, the baseline economic commitment that the county and the city each could make toward this type of venture. With that baseline information, then a further, further discussion with the P-three group to establish what other elements might be added to the P-three, subtracted from the P-three, changed from the initial P-three presentation to come up with a project that was economically viable for both the city and the county and for the, the P-three development group and the subsequent investors and financing that would go with the P-three. We anticipate that that will probably take at least six to nine months of evaluation to, to, to get the P-three up to a point that we could be even comparable to the, the level of information we have on the, on the two building options that we have before us. Subsequent to the discussions that have been had with the commission and have subsequently made it into the, to the media, the, the two building proposers have also come to the table with, I won't say comparable P-three, but similar structured proposals. Clearly, we haven't had significant time to evaluate the differences of what those might be, but clearly, we're talking about six months to nine months to potentially a year before we would have the P-three option and then a comparable investigation of what the building proposals might be adjusted to. Staff's concern obviously is the, the continuing expense of continuing to look at option after option after option that keep coming forward. But at the board's direction, obviously, we will, we will move forward as, as the board considers appropriate.
Thank you, Roger.
I'd like to, I'd like to meet that, or indicate that there are several folks in the audience from the parties that have come to the county regarding this in case the board might want to ask any questions of them.
I think we're good. But I would recommend that, Julie, I'd recommend that we get some information on the website because frankly, I doubt anybody knows what a P-three is out in the public that's viewing this. So I, it's kind of like what we were discussing earlier, terminology is important. We're having these public meetings and yet the public doesn't know, often doesn't know what in the world you're talking about. So I would recommend that for next time. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to point out again, any, my support or opposition to this is really dependent on what the deal looks like and whether it saves the county operational dollars. This is where we're struggling with our budget right now, not so much in our capital budget, but certainly in our operational budget. So this has to make sense from a financial perspective, not just, you know, how much the cost of the building is, but how much it saves us, whether it's a P-three deal or whether it's a straight purchase or whether, even if it was building, and I'm not suggesting that's what we're looking at by any means, but it really comes down to what this does to the county and its future. Thank you.
Commissioner Talbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate Commissioner Johnson's opinions as well. You know, I know it's frustrating for you guys because you feel like you keep going back and back and back and for those that have put in proposals, they keep waiting for us to make a decision. Well, the reality is, we don't have to get a new building today. It's not like we have to do anything. We want to do something because if it makes economic sense, if it makes life easier for our constituents, if it makes it better for our staff, those are all things we want to do. We're in the economic situation right now where none of us at the county are ready to write a check for nine million, ten million, twenty, pick a number, any millions, right? We're not writing those kind of checks right now. So when we have an environment where something is proposed to us, different, I find it rather great that the other proposals now are saying, oh, yeah, P-three, we can talk about that too. Obviously, it's something that needs to be investigated because it's happening all around us. It's happening in other cities. And so I think although it will take more time, it's better that we do that than make the wrong decision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen B, Substance Abuse Programs, Behavioral Health and Housing Initiative Update. Ms. Hotrim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you want to put on the two-minute light for me? Or do I have a little more?
Two minutes, Julie.
All right, all right. Minute and a half, all right. I'll be quick. I'm Katrina Hotrim, Director of the Department of Substance Abuse Programs. First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to our mental health awareness event out on the plaza. I think it was a big success for the first time that we had it and it was great to see our partners and providers that want to be partners with us in the community and are looking forward to how we're going to initiate, especially our first spend. So with that being said, the reason why I'm here today is because I've said that everything that we're going to be doing through the ABCGC, I wanted to have a discussion item with the county commission first. And we had talked about housing the last time, but we really focused on adult housing and single-site supported housing or scattered support models. And when we were looking at this process, we realized that we had forgotten about the adolescents and adolescent transitional living. And what that means for us is that we would like to also, in the first phase, start addressing the transitional living issues for adolescents. Most of these, these adolescents or these providers aren't getting some sort of funding, but that's typically through CYFD and so you've got to be in their system in order to receive services and there's not really any other reimbursement rate unless you're getting, you're piecemealing pieces from Medicaid. So this would allow us to address some transitional living issues, allow people from the community to have access into transitional living such as Serenity Mesa, which is a transitional living facility for youth that are trying to maintain their sobriety and, and, and get back eventually into the community. So those are the things that we want to talk about and start addressing in the first round of RFPs. So would you, would this body like an update on how we're doing with the committees and RFPs or should we save that for a later date?
Well, I think a brief update would be good, but I also want to remind that whatever program that you're considering, I know there's groups that have interests and I know there's providers that would like to have access to some of, an opportunity to provide services around housing, but the commission and the other commission, the ABCGC commission, have all said that we want to have it vetted through committees and that's why we established the committees. And so while I know some folks are chomping at the bit to try to provide service, there's a reason that we're trying to do it prudently and to maximize the dollars and be as effective as possible. So I just want to remind that. Go ahead and proceed with your information.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to also update this body and let them know that we have selected our committee members. It is going to go to the ABCGC for confirmation or approval on the thirty-first, but we have contacted each, each of them because we had given the ABCGC as well as the commission the list in advance to, you know, give approvals or objections to. We received no objections, so we proceeded. We are working on an orientation packet and an orientation training for these, these committees and we hope to do that within the next couple of weeks. We think that our first project to vet through that, just through the committees, are going to be the housing program that's already in existence. It's called Community Connections. It's a joint partnership between the city and the county and it's a jail reentry program that focuses on supported housing for these individuals. So since that has been approved already through the county commission and moved to the budget, we believe that that will be our first item to vet through two committees, which will be the Community Supports Committee as well as the Housing Committee. And we are also working on additional RFPs, things like the Community Engagement Teams. That would be if we continue on this regional crisis model that we're working on with Sandoval County and Rio Rancho, with the police departments and APD, working with them on developing one crisis mobile model so that we can use this sort of regionally, and this is our first regional approach, a step down to crisis. These crisis teams are a Community Engagement Teams, which is a lower level peer-supported model, and so we hope to, to stop some of the intervention altogether with police. So that would be another one we're moving on.
Katrina, I applaud that effort. I know you and your staff have been very aggressive to see that happen and be implemented. Our Sheriff's Department in many areas, as you're aware, is ahead in this regard and so I just want to make sure they continue to be involved.
Mr. Chairman, yes, thank you. And one of the things that we have talked to this Sheriff's Department out and they're, they're fully involved in this, engaged in it, so we're very pleased about that. And they're also excited if we move forward with this, along with the city and the other jurisdictions, about the possibility of partnering with us on a pilot where we would pay for one staff person and then also the crisis response professional to go out and, and work with APD and also do crisis response teams. So that will be something that we continue to vet through these committees. So that's the basic update. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioner Talbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo Commissioner Dela Cruz's comments. I mean, today, a press release went out about, you know, New Mexico Cal and our partnership with them, Mental Health Awareness Day today, all of the great things the county is leading the way on and you and your team are doing an incredible job specifically trying to wrangle all of us and get our support and that's never easy. But I do applaud you for it because you're, you're really taking a very deliberate and specific approach, which I know people are like chomping at the bit. They see those tax dollars like, oh, we need some of that money. Well, well, we need to put the money in the right places and that's what this commission has agreed to do. And thank you for being patient, but also for having some specifics, like you just said, where we can participate in a pilot project and have one of our officers involved and, and keep public safety at the front as well. So thanks, Katrina.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again, Katrina, and I apologize for dragging you to DC the next few days. I know it doesn't exactly come at a very convenient time for you and I appreciate you being willing to come. When Commissioner Dela Cruz and I were in DC in March, we had some meetings with the DOJ and your participation would have been very helpful. So I very much appreciate that you're going. I think it'll be a very productive trip. We're trying to work together. This is something that's kind of difficult, but we're getting there. I mean, I'm actually very pleased with the progress we've made. Just about everything we're doing is kind of a work in progress. We're feeling our way through this to find, find the best avenue to not only spend the dollars that this commission passed, but also to align our other resources, whether they're the mill levy resources or city resources or private resources outside of the system. And so I know it can be frustrating for folks in the behavioral health community, but it was today's, actually today's event was, I think, very good for them as well to see the unity hasn't let up and the drive hasn't let up and there's so much going on that most people don't see every day, including the folks in the behavioral health community, whether they be providers or clients. They don't see what all, all the work you're doing behind the scenes. So thank you very much for that. And I wanted to point out whether or not anybody noticed it, but we're all wearing the green ribbon for Behavioral Health Awareness Month today and this was one of the things that came out of our press conference at noon today. So thank you.
Madam County Manager, do you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just, I know that Rebecca Hendy had some concern about how we would be spending, excuse me, our behavioral health dollars and I think it was a very valid concern and I just wanted to, to let you know, Ms. Hendy, we will not be paying for corrections officers out of that budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Katrina, if you would pass along our thanks to all of the staff, Margarita and the others of Parks and Recreation staff that helped put on today's event. I think it was very, very successful first time out and if you continue to do this, I'm sure it'll just grow and get better.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for support.
Let me announce that the next commission meeting will take place on Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty-sixteenth. There will be zoning meeting at three o'clock PM here in these chambers. Also, on Tuesday, the fourteenth, we will hold a administrative meeting at five o'clock PM also in these chambers. Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned.